For tuning in and being here for our April 25th Board of Selectmen meeting. We are just coming out of executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the New England Police Benevolent Association, NEBPA, Local 1A Police Patrol, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFCSCME, Local 1703 Unit 1, and New England Police Benevolent Association Local 101 Dispatchers. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of this town. I'll ask you all now to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing we're going to do is the transmitting of Treasury Warrant 42, 42A, 43, and 43A. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? And there are no approval of minutes. I just want to say a couple words just before we move into appointments. I just wanted to address the vandalism that we've had at Yentile in the men's bathrooms. Excuse me, I just want, you know, the board and Town Manager Hal, you know, we are working with the police and the town departments on finding out who the people are and working towards, you know, mitigating it so it doesn't happen. We've seen many more pictures than were posted recently, and these are not, you know, these are intentional acts. There's been damage to the point where it looks like they're ready to rip off, you know, a faucet or something unsuccessfully but have created damage that needs to be repaired. So, you know, obviously, we don't know who is doing it yet, but we're hoping we're going to find out. But obviously, as Mr. Hal stated in his statement, that, you know, we ask if you do see any suspicious behavior, that you don't approach the people, but you do call the police and let them know. So we appreciate the town's cooperation in this, and hopefully we can stop this so everybody can, you know, enjoy the park and the facilities as intended. So, thank you. We will now move on to appointments. Our first one is Anthony and Kimberly Faricchio. Am I saying that? Okay. Jet Nutrition LLC, DBA Breeze Nutrition, regarding request to obtain a common victual or license for property located at 2 Lowell Street, Unit 6B. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having me.
It's our pleasure.
My name is Kim Fratello. We are looking to open a shake and tea shop in the Tremels Plaza, Square One Plaza. We own Jet Nutrition in North Andover. We've been there for about 15 months or so, very successful shake and tea shop. We have energy teas and meal replacement shakes, nutrition shakes, and sports nutrition. We're pretty much beverage only, along with some other bars and protein bars, things like that that we sell, but we're looking to have a small seating area with probably about eight seats or so, four tables for two, for our guests to join us and sit and enjoy their beverages. For the most part, we are mostly to-go, but we're looking to have a small seating area for that.
Just a second. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll take a motion. Based on the approvals, I believe we have recommendations.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, let me just get to the recommendations. So, the Health Director, Shirley Newhouse, has no concerns. Also, the Building Inspector, Al Spalding, has no objections. And that is it.
Take a motion that we grant the request.
Any discussion or questions? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
No, just welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you. We're looking forward to being part of the community.
Yeah, welcome. We're happy to have you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
When do you plan to open?
We're hoping to open this weekend, actually, or as soon as May 1st would be our opening day.
Great.
As long as everything goes well. And luckily, the build-out that was there existing, we didn't have to do any construction. The previous business that was there was very similar in nature. We had no build-out to do at all, so it was a pretty swift move in, and we're ready to go.
We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to call for the, I don't know that we called for the official vote, or did I?
No, we didn't.
Miss it.
Oh, all in favor? Sorry for the call. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Jamie McGoldy, Operations Manager, Tree Warden, regarding Tree City USA designation. Welcome, Jamie.
Here's one of those energy teas right now.
Yeah.
My name is Jamie McGoldy. I'm the Operations Manager for the Wilmington Department of Public Works. Been with the DPW now for 18 years, and I'm proud to say that I've been the town's Tree Warden for the last nine of those years. The DPW has received word again from the National Arbor Day Foundation that the town has again earned the designation of Tree City USA for 2021. The designation of Tree City helps Wilmington, helps recognize Wilmington for the many efforts and investments in tree care, tree conservation, and urban forestry planning, and is listed as an ongoing goal in the town's Open Space and Recreation Plan. To date, there are over 3,400 cities and towns nationwide that are designated as a Tree City USA. As you recall, the town of Wilmington received its first Tree City USA designation last spring for the previous year, 2020. The DPW applied again last fall for 2021, and we received email notification about two weeks ago that we have successfully renewed that designation. In order to be eligible for Tree City in 2022, the Board of Selectmen is required to make an official Arbor Day proclamation for 2022. Arbor Day is typically the last Friday in April. This year, it falls on this coming Friday, April 29th. So we would respectfully request tonight that the board consider endorsement of an Arbor Day proclamation for that day. Most of you may recall, last year, I presented some of the many benefits of trees, including air quality improvements and carbon dioxide reduction, energy conservation benefits, stormwater benefits, and also increased property values. As a reminder, to be considered for Tree City USA, communities must meet four standards within a calendar year. The first standard is that the community must have a tree board or a tree department. Obviously, the DPW has a standalone tree division, so therefore, this satisfies standard number Standard number two, excuse me, the community must have a tree care ordinance, and in Massachusetts, cities and towns are required to abide by Mass. General Law, Chapter 87, which is the Public Shade Tree Mass. General Law. That requires cities and towns to hold public shade tree hearings anytime a healthy public shade tree is to be removed from a town right away. In addition, the Wilmington Conservation Commission approved their tree and vegetation removal policy in 2019. That policy sets guidance for the removal of trees within certain distances to resource areas. So any resident that's planning to remove a tree that might be within a buffer zone to a resource area is encouraged to contact the conservation office before they do that. Standard number three, the town must have a forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2 per capita. When we break down the operating account for the tree division of the DPW, Wilmington is spending approximately $10 per capita. So this standard is also satisfied. And lastly, standard four, town is required to have an Arbor Day observance and a proclamation. So for 2021, the Wilmington Memorial Library participated in Mass. Tree Wardens and Forests Association Tree Seedling Program, where they gave out about 300 free pin oak trees to residents on April 30th last year, which was Arbor Day last year. The 2021 Arbor Day proclamation was signed by the Board of Selectmen as well last year on April 12th, 2021. And again, we're looking tonight to get a 2022 proclamation from the board. It's been attached for endorsement. So what's next? In addition to having the proclamation for Arbor Day from the Board of Selectmen, the designation of Tree City is earned annually, so we fully intend every year to reapply for it in the fall. And again, the Wilmington Memorial Library is planning to participate in the Arbor Day Seedling Giveaway this year, giving out 200 free tree seedlings to residents this week, starting today, actually, while supplies last, and on a first-come, first-served basis. So any additional information that anyone wants to see on that can be found on the Wilmington Public Library's website, www.wilmlibrary.org. And lastly, the DPW would just like to extend appreciation to the Friends of the Library, who's funding the tree seedling program, and also the Library Director, Tina Stewart, and Assistant Director, Charlotte Wood, who have been absolutely invaluable to us in helping us celebrate Arbor Day. So with that, again, I would respectfully request an endorsement for the proclamation of Arbor Day for April 29th, 2022, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Yeah, we will take that consideration up at this time, but I'm first going to open it up to the board if they have any questions.
I just want to thank you very much. Your presentations are always the best that come into this meeting.
Thank you very much.
I thank you.
Okay.
Make the motion.
Yep. So, board to consider signing proclamation declaring April 29th, 2022 Arbor Day in the town of Wilmington. So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Gary?
Oh.
Sorry. All right. So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it. Next, we have Paula Looney, Town Engineer, regarding the Mass. Works Grant update, project timeline, and traffic detours.
You, Madam Chair, members of the board. Paula Looney, Town Engineer. I'm here tonight with Bob Nicolai from TEC, our engineering consultant, and Elizabeth Altman, also of TEC, our engineering consultant. Elizabeth is a licensed transportation engineer in the Commonwealth, and Bob is a licensed structural engineer in the Commonwealth. What I plan to do here tonight is just give you a brief update on the Mass. Works Grant, where we stand, and then transition, and Bob and Elizabeth are going to talk through one portion of the Mass. Works Grant, which is the culvert replacement project. I made an announcement, I think, a couple months ago to the board that we had a shortfall in funding with respect to these Mass. Works Grant projects. Very happy to report that the state approved an additional $1 million.
Wow.
And funds for these, for the culvert sewer and roadway projects. That's a huge win for the town, of course. Now we can hit the ground running on these very important public infrastructure projects. It's also crucial timing, though, with respect to the culvert. And this culvert is, it's in dire straits. It's a legitimate public safety concern. Bob is going to elaborate on that structurally in a moment, but I guess my point is, is that now's the time to act. And while it's great that we have funding for this now to move forward, it doesn't come without consequences, short-term consequences, as they relate to traffic. In order to replace this culvert, we're looking at a temporary full closure of Route 62. It's, you know, it obviously can't be, it's a huge, huge, huge undertaking. We take it very seriously. Elizabeth is going to talk through the details of the logistics of that and what that looks like. We've been coordinating with the police department, with the fire department. We plan to coordinate with the school department, and we just thought we're about three months out, I would say, from breaking ground, so to speak, in the footprint of the traveled ways to see this disruption. So we thought it'd be a good time now to come meet with the board, get the message out. We're going to start our notifications to businesses in that area. I've already met with one business in particular, and of course, the business is there along Jefferson Road. So thank you for the time this evening. I truly appreciate it, and without further ado, I'll hand the baton here to, a mic to Bob. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to hear about this project. As Paul mentioned, this is the replacement of the Loversbrook Culvert Middlesex Ave over the Loversbrook. Just to kind of orientate everybody to where we're at, we're on Route 62 here, in between Jefferson Road and North Street. It's right near K&amp;M Dry Cleaners, Sunnyside Cafe, and Elias on the bottom corner there. As Paul mentioned, this culvert's not in good condition. It was put in in 1960 with about a 50-year lifespan, so you can see where we're at now. The, it's, the current structure consists of two steel plate arch structures that are starting to degrade quickly. We're starting to see holes in the sides of the culverts. Even a sinkhole opened up sometime, last year. The DPW fixed right away, which was great, but that indicates possibly more sinkholes to open up shortly. We've seen these types of structures over ti, they, when they go, they can go quickly. So you may not get too much of an advance warning. This culvert has been sagging now for years. In the middle, the Mastod has been inspecting this. Typically, Mastod inspection cycle is about every two years for a bridge. This bridge is getting much more attention than that because of the condition. They actually have a SAG monitoring chart where they're keeping an eye on how it's settling over time. And as Paul can attest to, you know, Mastod's sending reports every few months now saying, hey, what are you doing? What's going on? You need to get this fixed. So a project this complicated is great that Paul was able to, and the town was able to secure this funding, but this is something that we see as something that needs to be addressed quickly. Again, just more highlighting some of, you know, what was in the most recent Mastod Bridge Inspection. It was rated a three, which actually corresponds to something they call a severe major deficiency or a critical condition. So it's something that we need to get to address soon. This, I'll try to save you all the technical details, but I'll kind of tell you that this is a very complicated project. You may have heard, you know, town X, Y, and Z replaced a culvert in a weekend. Why can't we do ours in a weekend? Well, there's a few reasons why, and I'll kind of touch on those briefly. The skew angle of the culvert's kind of the major one. It doesn't intersect at a 90-degree angle. The stream comes in at about a 45-degree angle. So that makes our culvert much longer than a typical, you know, culvert would be. The only ways around that would be realigning all of 62 or realigning the stream. Both are kind of unfeasible. The surrounding houses, businesses, make it impossible to do like a temporary alignment shift and then shift everybody back. Early on in the project, we looked at potentially driving sheeting down the middle of the road, shifting all the traffic to one side, doing the work, shifting everybody back, and removing the sheeting. Unfortunately, we did some probes in that area and found a lot of boulders, so that makes the driving of the sheeting impossible. So, you know, the width of the road is skewed and the presence of different utilities that cross over this culvert. All those aspects combined made this, you know, let's call it an atypical culvert replacement. Again, just talking quickly about the utilities. The Verizon duct banks in the sidewalk on the north side, you've got a national grid in the north shoulder, you've got a water main on the south side of the bridge that's currently buried in the stream, future sewer, and different drainage catch basins and outlet pipes in the area. So this is the proposed replacement. Again, we'll pass through this pretty quickly, but just showing kind of, you can see the two circles there representing the existing and the new arch representing the proposed. And that's just kind of a general picture of what it will look like when it's done. So now getting kind of to the meat and potatoes of what we're here to talk about is kind of the construction sequence and what's going to happen. So what we're calling pre-closure, this, these are activities that'll happen before we close the road. They'll happen with minimal traffic disruptions, maybe a shoulder closure, maybe a sidewalk closure, but these are things that'll probably, if our timeline's correct, probably happen sometime in June, maybe early July. But we're talking about national grid coming in, cutting and capping their line. They're in the shoulder on the north side, so they'll need either a temporary lane closure or shoulder closure, if that were. Installing erosion controls around the site, installing as much of the control of water system as they can. They're going to have to bypass the water around this site so they can do all their work in the dry, so they'll try to install as much of that as possible. Depending on the contractor's means and methods, which we have the pre-construction meeting with the contractor tomorrow at 9:00 AM, figuring out if they want to install the temporary Verizon support before or after the road closure. That's kind of up to them. And like I said, these activities accomplish with minor traffic disruptions, nothing long-term. So then, right around July, we think, and this is based on contractor schedule, lead times on the culvert itself, now that we have, you know, funding available, we can get the contract executed, and we can get the contractor rolling on getting these things to site, but we think this is going to time up right around July. So on day one, we'll have a full closure of Middlesex Avenue. The detour will be put in place. Liz will talk a little bit more about the detour, but, so the first step is 21 days prior, calendar days prior to instituting that detour, they have to give the town notice, written notice. 21 is a minimum. We're going to be pushing the contractor to give us as much advanced notice as possible, but they are contractually required to give 21 days ahead of time. 14 days prior, 14 calendar days prior, the variable message board signs will go up at each end of the culvert, just alerting the public that this road will be closed between these dates. So that'll go up, then they'll institute the detour, install the rest of the control of water system, remove the existing culverts and headwalls, install the adjacent manholes and sewer lines beneath the culvert, prepare the subgrade, put the footings down, put the culvert barrel in, install the temporary geo grid walls. I'll talk about those briefly in a second, too. Try to save, I'll try to spare you all the details. And then, by the end of that 30 calendar days, the contractor must have a single lane open. So right down the middle of the road, it'll be one lane with a signal at each end, allowing alternating traffic. At the end of 30 days, they must have that open, or else they start to incur contractual penalties if they don't. So, once the full closure's behind us, we have a single lane operating with temporary signals at each end. They'll finish up the rest of the work on each side, so traffic will be going right down the middle, and on each side, they'll still be working. As I mentioned, with that skew angle, we can't do pre-cast headwalls, we have to do cast-in-place headwalls. So the forming and pouring of those headwalls will take place during this 42-day, single-lane operating period. They'll install the guardrails and sidewalks, pave the road, and at the end of this 42 calendar days, they must have two lanes open and one pedestrian access. That pedestrian access may not be a full sidewalk, it may just be on the road, it may not be an elevated sidewalk, it may just be on the road, but they need to have one pedestrian access and two traffic lanes open at the end of that 42 days. So at that point, the project is what you would call substantially complete. Not fully complete, but substantially complete. So then, after that 42-day period, we have another 60-day period where they're tying up loose ends. You know, relocating the water line, finishing the sidewalks, installing the final details for the guardrail, you know, all those miscellaneous activities. And you may be saying, why is that 60 days if they're only doing miscellaneous activities? National grid. They have to come in and install their new final line over the bridge. So that's where that 60-day period comes in. So at the end of this 60 days, everything's done.
So we're looking at like four months, start to finish, roughly?
And then, just to quickly talk about construction staging, what's going to happen during the construction? And I'll bring up a map here in a second to show this, but the contractor will have access to the lot at the terminus of Jefferson Road through the entire construction duration. There are some semi-trailers back there that lease the land, so the contractor has to coordinate with them and make sure they can still do what they need to do. And then, the K&amp;M Dry Cleaners lot. 21 days prior to the institution of the full closure, the contractor has access to the K&amp;M Dry Cleaner lot. They must put up a fence, their own gate, so that the public doesn't accidentally go in there, and they have that, they have access to that lot for the 21 days prior, 30 days full closure, and then they need to be out of there seven days after that. That's to set up the culvert on the side so they can pick it and swing it into place in one pick. And just to give you the map, that shows kind of the Jefferson Road lot, and this is the K&amp;M lot where we'll have a chain link fence for the contractor for their access. So with that, I will pass it over to Liz to talk about traffic.
So as Bob said, about 14 days prior to the 30-day closure, they will, a variable message sign will be placed on I-93 to the north and the south of the, the two Concord Street and the 62 interchange to let everybody know, both trucks and passenger vehicles, that Route 62 will be closed. There will also be variable message signs just south of Federal Street and just north of High Street, and that will, they'll, those are a little more flexible. The 93 signs are static, they have to be approved by Mastod, exactly what it says, but the 60, Route 62 messages can change. They'll probably start out saying, "Bridge closed ahead," with the dates, "Follow detour." And then, at the end of 30 days, it will change to something like, "One lane ahead, seek alternate route," to try and encourage people to go back to 93 or keep using the detour route. Because that one lane closure will probably be your biggest traffic concern. So the detour route will be on 93. We already have the access permit from the state. They have approved it, which is fantastic, because we want to keep the trucks off of the local roadway system. So they have approved it, and they are aware of the 90-day, or 90-day, the 30-day full closure and the 42-day one-lane opening. So those are the static signs that, static message that will be on the 93 signs during the entire process. The non-truck detour route will be coming southbound, will be High Street to Woburn Street to Concord Street to Federal Street, and same going back. We would hope that most people would use 93 instead of this route. It is available, obviously, to them to do that, and it would probably be quicker, but this is the route that will be signed for the local, the local detour. There is an extensive signage plan, so no one will have any reason to not be able to follow it. Yeah, well, so there'll be quite a few signs at the intersection of Middlesex 62 and High Street, again, keeping everybody on High to Woburn, and then again, to Concord to Federal. We do understand that there is a school at High and Woburn Street, so that is why we're really trying to push the 30-day closure over the summer, so that we can minimize disruption to the school. It's likely that the 42 days may extend into the beginning of the school system, so we will be working with the school transportation division to make sure that we can get the students to the school. And in case anybody wanted to know, that is what the temporary traffic signal will look like. They are mounted on portable trailers. They're solar-powered, and they do, they let everybody through, and then they stop, and then they let people in the other direction. So this is where a lot of the delays will be. That's why we're going to keep the trucks detoured to 93. And they'll want to be there anyway, because they won't want to sit in this traffic. I'm not going to say it's going to be awful and that's... I'm not going to say it's going to be awful and that it's apocalyptic, but it will have some delays because of the way the signals will have to operate in this, in this one-lane closure.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
On this particular signal, I know you, you may be familiar or not familiar with the issue that we're having on the tracks in that area. Would you consider another extension beyond the tracks, so when this turns red, that turns red, so there's not a car sitting across the tracks?
Very good point.
Because I'd hate to have, you know, as it is, it's...
It's pretty close to the tracks, right? This, the culvert, I mean, we could look at it, and as the, as we move through the construction phase, seeing if that would maybe work, but I, I think we'd probably want to keep it on either end of the culvert. Because the longer you make it, we have to make the all-red time, the length, somebody, if they scoot through one end and they have to drive all the way to the other end before we can turn the other side green. So the longer we make that crossing, the longer the delays are for people on either end.
Then maybe I would suggest a sign as big as that screen behind you that says, "Do not stop on tracks."
Yeah, I agree. I was, I agree 100%.
If you can't make it a light switch.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, go ahead.
Excellent question, Mr. Kyra. Thank you for the presentation, very informative, each of you. My first concern is, I would imagine that our police and fire will be consulted, given that this will be a significant change for someone who's waiting for a response from them. So for example, heaven forbid, there's an incident on North Street, that it would be difficult for someone, you know, that's the only way, up to North Street, they're going to have to find their way to Salem Street or to High Street, and the response time. I mean, I would imagine that our chiefs will coordinate with mutual aid, I mean...
Yeah, great, great question, great points, too. And that, we've gotten the ball rolling on that. We had a kickoff meeting, I'd say, as time flies, it was about a year ago now, with both police, police chief and fire chief, and operations DPW Director of Public Works. And we met again this past Friday. Right now, we're working out some details with the help of Mr. Rivaldi and Chief Kavanaugh with setting up a temporary substation, public safety substation on the other side of the culvert, right? So that they'll be able to dispatch from that location in the event of an emergency.
Better, I trust.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Based on what you've just told me, I have no, you know, no issue at all, I, you know, have great faith in both of you and, and the chiefs, so the only suggestion I would say is that to have that temporary station remain there.
Come perfectly, yeah.
I just didn't, Paul, I know, obviously, you guys are working on that, I just didn't hear it mentioned, and that's why I wanted to break it down.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
Thank you so much, Matt.
Can I have a follow-up on the other?
Yep.
Regarding no trucks in certain areas like Woburn Street or Salem Street, are you going to have separate signage on those streets specifically? I know you're going to have the electronic signs on 93, but if a truck loses its way and finds itself riding on a, a local road, and it really shouldn't be, will you have a sign before that they enter that street that say, "No trucks, no tonnage," or whatever the case may be?
Right, there's separate truck signage, especially along Concord and Federal, because that's probably the location that they might get caught the most, is the northbound route. So we do have separate truck signage to, to direct them to use 93. Coming south, they'll be caught by the, the signage on 93 to bypass the first, bypass the Route 62 intersection.
Well, I guess my question is, if they get past that, and now they say, "Oh geez, I can't go up Concord to Federal," but hey, here's Woburn Street, which is a great cut-through, as people know. Cutting through, passing the Woburn Street School onto High Street, or taking a right, continuing on Woburn Street, is there going to be a sign before they enter Woburn Street, or a sign before they enter High Street to say, "No trucks"?
There's a sign directing the trucks along Concord Street to Federal Street, so no turns. There, there can be extra signage that says, "No trucks," turning onto Woburn Street from Concord Street, if it's not already signed to, for, for a truck restriction.
And that would be the same over near the Hardin Tavern, where you can enter Woburn Street that way, too. That's a local...
That one's signed already as, "No trucks," right? If I'm not mistaken?
Woburn Street, as a person, you handle the street, I think it's, "No trucks." Your point, Mr. Kyra, I, I think we can add additional signs as we see fit, and something like this is typically adjusted on the fly. After the first day or two, if we experience problems, we can move some things around. We have our own sign shop, so, you know, a couple of signs here and there shouldn't affect the deal all that much. We'll do whatever we have to do to make this work. My only fear is that if a truck does make its way past, it needs to exit somehow, and we don't want it to say, "I'm stuck," right? And so, if, if the road is already geometrically, it can allow a truck to pass through, say like High Street. You know, we do once in a while how trucks go down there, and it's okay, but we'll do our best to try to minimize that.
Well, I, I understand, I mean, there are people, there might be movers, you know, someone might be moving their house, and there's a truck that goes, you know, a truck has to go down there. I mean, it's a public road, and I don't, you know, have a problem with a truck going down there, but when, if there's a convoy of trucks, you know, there's a lot of people that walk that street, there's the school, there's the kids. That, that's my concern. I mean, I, you know, a truck happens to go there, I just don't want them to make it a regular route.
So, so Greg asked the question about, you know, emergency vehicles, that was one of my questions. So where exactly will be closed off? So, obviously, I'm assuming from the intersection at the top, where Salem and High, coming down 62? Just so I get it better.
So the only part of the road that will be closed is at the culvert.
Oh, okay.
So, people will have access to their houses past High Street, there's a couple of houses there.
Yeah.
And then you still will be able to access the RMV, but you'll have to go around the...
Up and around, and come out. So like Eli's will stay open, and, well, North Street can shut off at that end, or...
Uh, they can probably, they can still get out on, from North Street.
You just take a right, obviously.
And have to take a right. But the only place that's actually physically closed is right at the culvert.
It's just right there, okay, understood. Okay, thank you.
Is this project going to be a 24-hour, or is it going to be, you know, 7 to 5, 4?
I think what we have in the contract documents, Bob, 7 to 7?
7 to 7, six days a week.
7 to 7?
Just to make that 30 days realistic.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of some residents in that area didn't want to move overnight.
And are you, are you planning on increasing the road lighting at the, during the construction?
I'm sure the contractor would have, like, temporary, you mean like...
Because it is poor visibility down there at night.
The location of like the, oh, at the actual barricades.
Yes.
We can look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, some of the questions have already been asked. Some notes that I had was the concern over the back-to-school, so you feel, based on the project timeline, that you think that you're going to be able to avoid the back-to-school time period?
For the full 30-day closure, though we're going to make every effort to make, to keep that when the school is closed. And then as much as, you know, we can shorten that 42-day timeline to, we will do everything that we can. But we will have to have a conversation with the school transportation department as we get into August and see where we are.
Okay. So obviously, the discussion was already had regarding the medical and the, the temporary substation, I think that's key. The national grid piece, speaking about the gas line, is that going to have any impact on users of national grid for Wilmington in terms of the gas line itself, or is that...
They said no, no.
Okay.
They just want it, believe it's looped in that area, but they just want it back in by November 15.
Okay. And then, there was some conversation about certain businesses, the RMV came up, I'm assuming there's discussions happening with the MBTA, since they'll be, you know, they're essentially kind of in a butter, if you will, in a state agency. To that end, relative to RMV and MBTA, but just in general for the businesses, what type of outreach are we doing to let, you know, I don't want to single out any one business, but for example, people do source groceries at Eli's, which is a means to provide, you know, an important factor, public transportation is an important factor, so what type of communication are we doing to those businesses ahead of time?
Great question. Where Eli's is situated, I have been coordinating with the owners, so they're fully aware of the project, supported of the project. I've told them what our next steps are, that we don't have like that finite date yet, but it's, it's kind of coming, right? I haven't reached out to the other businesses yet. What I, what I hope to do is put together a, a formal letter with my business card in it, but also reach out to the, the owners of those, not only the, the owners of the buildings, right? Because they'd get in touch with their tenants. And also utilize our social media, Twitter, Facebook page, our website, and kind of go full throttle at this point, as far as getting the message out. The challenge is just that, like, we don't have that specific day where the, you know, and that's going to, it's a little fluid, right? And it will be up until like Bob had mentioned, like, a few weeks before, but we have a good idea at this point, and we're confident, we were confident enough to meet with you, to tell you that, yeah, we're expecting this to happen in July.
And then to that, regarding communication, I talked, I led with the business aspect of things, but then to couple that with equal importance is, is the local presence of residents there in that area, is there going to be something targeted to some of those streets that flow into that specifically? I know all residents in Wilmington should know, but specifically the targeted area within a certain radius, and I know that, you know, we have reverse 911, I don't want to say that out loud because I know it's not used for every purpose, and that it's supposed to be used for very specific reasons, but what would be the communication plan to the, to the public and specifically the abotters, residents-wise?
A mix of, combination, I think, of both of those things. So letters and, and then the Evergranger, one of the phone services, the...
Okay.
And again, so the letters, I would write two letters, right? You know, different, but I would put my contact information in it so that residents would, would call me, and then I'd be able to, you know, answer any questions, address any concerns, or get some feedback from those folks in that area.
Thank you. And then the last question is, obviously, and I know there's a memo here, do you feel confident, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, that financially, we're going to be in good shape for this project?
I do, yes. With that, I, that's first of all, construction is, I mean, as you know...
Changes.
Yeah, changes. You know, and there's always kind of something that comes up, and I'm confident in our team that we, we're able to find solutions that are cost-effective, and think on the fly, and kind of band together and, and figure it out, right? We, it's no secret what our financial situation is with these, right? We have a cap, and the state provided us with this wonderful opportunity to, you know, and to say, "Okay, here's, we understand the position you're in with inflation and, and supply chain woes that..." And they're getting it from all communities, right? Not just us. And, yeah, I think, I think we're in good shape. And I will say, too, that Princeton Development came to the table as well, and they contributed, what I put a value on it, as close to a half a million dollars of additional work to the Jefferson Road area, that we are able to, to see some value on that, too, so some, to help kind of reduce that deficit.
That's good to know. And then lastly, you know, in the builder world in general, there's issues with supplies. Do you feel that the supplies that you need and the staffing that you need is, is going to be there when you need it, or is it going to be any concerns about material shortages?
Since we, you know, put this project out to bid, we've been in touch with the culvert manufacturer ever since then, and he's consistently said five weeks for lead time, which isn't outrageous.
Okay.
It has been something that we were concerned about, but that's kind of the key item, and that that's found that that lead time's not terrible. And Paul Winslow, you've probably talked to him more recently than I have.
I have, yeah. It's thankfully, the type of culvert is, they're not seeing any supply chain issues there. And like Bob said, they, I believe said four to five weeks. I was surprised, I, I was expecting him to say months, right? To hear something like that was outstanding news. We're seeing some issues with, like, duct-tight line piping. We would only be using that, though, at the end of the project, where both lane, that would be the water line, water main relocation that comes with this, so that would be after the 45-day or 42-day period of the single lane. So hopefully, things just kind of continue to work out like that for us, and it's going to take a little bit of, I guess, luck, right? When it comes to those types of things. I want to say, too, just with that, when I spoke about public safety, that's still in flux, we're, we're working with those folks, you know, with, in particular, the fire chief, to figure out where that location is to temporarily store whatever they need. And that, that was the message, really, was whatever you need, and, you know, we'll figure it out, just, so.
Yeah.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Just, I'm sorry. Just a couple of questions. To what degree, if any, will this schedule be impacted by weather, you know, rain, storms? Is that, is that going to create any issues, do you think?
In New England, it's always a potential, but, you know, that's why we did bill 30 days in and 42 days, thinking that if you did, do get inclement weather during that time, you know, it is New England, all these contractors know, so they should be prepared for that, which is why we didn't say like a weekend. So the 30 days, yeah, there may be a few weather delays in there, but I don't anticipate it, you know, unless we get some crazy, you know, two weeks of non-stop rain, you know, I don't see any huge risk in that.
And then in terms of the, the water line, so that water line will be disconnected for how long that runs over the brook?
I don't think we can lose it for any period of ti, any lengthy period of time. We'll work out with the utilities manager on, you know, whether we do a live tap or something like that, but we'll keep it, it won't, it won't be like a national grid situation where we, where we cut, cap it, and let it sit stagnant, it just can't happen, because we need that, we need the flow availability through this.
Thank you.
First, Paul, I'm glad you mentioned Princeton Properties coming through with a half a million dollars. I see it in the, in your memo, but I'm glad you mentioned it to the community at large. And secondly, now, this is a three, a three-phase project, right?
Correct.
So the sewer would come after the, the culvert project, and then you have something, the road corridor improvements?
Yeah.
Is that, and all of this money is for all three projects? It's not just for the...
For the culvert, it's not just for the culvert. So, we prioritized with, I put the big two up there as the culvert and the sewer project. The value in the Princeton, in the Princeton contribution came in that they're taking on the lion's share of the roadway improvements portion. So, that's why I don't, haven't really talked too much about that. I mean, that and the roadway, it's improvements, it's kind of the icing on the cake, so to speak, because all these improvements are happening, entrenching through that section of roadway, right? It has to phase after the culvert work is done and the sewer work is done, and after Princeton puts their foundation and does their heavy lifting, because we don't want all that construction happening, all the construction vehicles rolling over freshly-coated pavement, freshly-stripped pavement, you know, the pedestrian upgrades that we're doing. So that'll come next year, is what I anticipate. So that'll come springtime next year, the, the roadway improvements.
Yeah, only because I mentioned, because sometimes I see these projects done, and they have a beautiful roadway, and it's all done and set to go, and then within a few months, they start digging it up again, and I shake my head, because they're now putting in some lines and piping or something, and we're making a great-looking project, all of a sudden, I don't want it dug up for the sewer. I mean, what comes first? The chicken or the egg? Is that going to be an issue? And, you know, this covers it all.
Yeah, it's a, it's a puzzle, it's a jigsaw, we're going to figure out how those pieces fit together. We're going to figure out how those pieces fit together. How, the timing of the sewer, there's portions of it that are, you know, off the commuter rail parking lot, so it's kind of off the beaten path that our sewer contractor can start to work on. It won't impact traffic, but the rest of it becomes a linear project down Middlesex Ave and Salem Street. We obviously can't have the sewer contractor working when that's our domain detour, right? So it's going to take a real effort on, on our part to make sure that these two contractors are coordinated, they're playing nice, and that there's little disruption, as little disruption to traffic as possible.
And to speak to your point a little bit too, is why I kind of breeze through it on one of the slides, but one of the, we're having the culvert contractor, as opposed to the sewer contractor, install the manholes that are adjacent to the culvert and run the sewer lines under the culvert. So they construct, you know, this portion of sewer and then the sewer contractor does the rest.
Oh, okay.
So there is.
I should have.
Sorry, my hand is a little bit clear as you like, but it's, yes. So this section is handled by the culvert contractor and the sewer contractor. There should be limited trenching in our newly placed pavement.
Great, yeah.
So, let me get this straight. You're looking at, to complete the project plus the sewer that has to go in there, you're looking for about a year for everything?
Yeah, I'm looking at it about a year, yeah. Well, we have until June 30th, 2023, calendar year 2023, to use the Mass Works funds. So that's the time period we have.
So I'm, I'm under the assumption that that area of roadway will be on, on the rough grade?
Jefferson Road?
Jefferson, yeah.
Well, Jefferson, that's a kind of a different animal altogether.
Yeah, I'm looking at 62 really.
Oh, 62. Yeah, it'll be, well, they'll put finished pave down, so it'll be a top course of pavement.
Oh, okay.
Down, yeah.
Thank you.
It'll be like a temporary pavement patch and then they'll come back and do a permanent pavement.
I, I would just note that I think one of the open questions in terms of when the paving is done, that is contingent upon when Princeton gets the green light to go ahead with their project, which as we know is tied up right now. So, you know, we're hoping that it can go through the, get addressed through the appeal process in a, in a reasonable manner.
All right. Any other further questions? Thank you so much. Congratulations on, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yep, Jamie.
I just wanted to say, we have to DPW thanked the TDC for all their hard work, but there's also someone sitting at this table who spent a lot of sleepless nights trying to figure out logistically how to make this project work when it went over budget. Mr. O'Connell said it perfectly, it's an unprecedented construction climate right now. Materials are hard to find, we're seeing pricing for projects just skyrocket. Mr. Looney was able to secure a million dollars in grant funds extra.
Yep.
On top of what was already allotted for this project. And that needs to be said publicly. I know the board appreciates it. The general public needs to know.
100%.
The level of effort that Paul has put into it.
No, thank you, thank you for mentioning that, Paul. Yes, thank you very much. This, I know this has been a long time coming and, I mean, kudos to you and your staff, you know, just all of you, just, this is wonderful, it's finally getting done and scoring that extra million, it's just, you know, hard work paid off, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Jamie, thank you to the board. There's a, there's a lot of folks though.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Princeton, Tom Andrew Hall, and the TDC.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, great job.
Great job.
Appreciate you coming in, this was a great presentation and looking forward to it.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. You two play nice.
There we go.
Like lifting each other over there.
You two used to zoom.
I know, I know, right?
Point all his arms around.
Have a good night.
Did he almost hit you?
Yes. You both hit, almost hit each other a few times.
Oh, no.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, now we're going to move on to our next appointment, which is discussion and assignment of motions for the annual town meeting, Mr. Hall.
Yes, so as members know, at this time in advance of the annual town meeting, the warrant articles are assigned or at least proposed assignments. Essentially, the rationale is starting with the chair and then just going in order based upon seniority on the board, and that's how it has played out here. I did want to give the board an opportunity to offer any comment if members wish to make any modifications in the assignments. I would note one modification, and that is Article 47, which is the amending the inhabitant bylaws relative to changing select, selectmen to select board. And selectman De Palmer is going to take that one on. Otherwise, unless you want, I don't know if you want to go, I, I would say if members have any particular changes, if you could let, let us know at this point and we can make those edits.
I have none.
I have none.
None here.
Okay.
Mr. Hall, you're going to provide us with the first adjournments?
Yes.
We usually get it this meeting, but.
Yes, yep, we will have the motions ready for everybody.
That's great. Good. All right. Thank you. That brings us into communications.
Yes, so first on the, the communications agenda is my announcement on the appointment of the recreation director. You all know that Karen Campbell, who has been an integral part of the rec department for many years, both in her capacity as a program coordinator and more recently as the recreation director, will be resigning at the end of, retiring at the end of September. And we're fortunate that the current program director, Brett Sawin, is, some of them very confident is going to be able to fill her shoes. He has been with us now for three years, is very involved in all aspects of the recreation program, is involved in the, the basketball, rec basketball program, in, involved in the men's basketball program, the SNL flag football, rookies, T-ball and the playground programs. And he comes to us by way of the New England Patriots, so, you know, given the, the type of folks that they hire, you know, and certainly was glad to get him when we did. He's a graduate of UMass Amherst, has a bachelor's, a science degree in sports management from the Eisenberg School of Management. But most importantly, he's really become invested in Wilmington over the last three years. As you know, from the history that we have in, in the rec office, you need people who are invested in the program, get to know the people, and, and he's done that. So I'm glad that he was accepting of the role. And Brett is here this evening. I just, if you want to offer any comments, Brett?
Sure, yeah. I just want to say.
Yes, please, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So Brett Sawin, program coordinator, recreation department. Very excited to accept the position of director. As Jeff said, I've been in the department for three years this Friday, this coming Friday, so I'm very excited at the opportunity. And Karen has been an amazing boss the past three years. And as Jeff said, I have big shoes to fill, but I'm very excited about the opportunity and had a great connection here in town. I've fallen in love with the town and the residents and I've met a lot of them through programs and trips and just people coming in to visit and say hello. And I've really enjoyed my time here and looking forward to continuing as director going forward in October.
Great. Well, thank you and thank you for coming tonight and speaking.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we appreciate it. You know, we're looking forward to it. The, as you know, the rec department has great programs. You know, my kids have participated in many, many over the years, so.
It's great.
You know, we do, definitely a high bar, but I think you'll be just fine. You're already in and, you know, can only go up from here, right?
Thank you, yes.
So, welcome to the new position and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
If anybody else wants to say a few words.
I'm just offering congratulations. I'm glad to see that someone's being promoted from within.
Yes.
And I certainly appreciate your commitment to Wilmington and it's nice to have a, you know, not a new face, but a, another generation coming in to kind of carry the legacy forward. You know, I'm born and raised in the town and I can speak as, you know, others here, you know, multi-generation family in, in town. And the recreation department has always been a bright spot for the town. It's always been a happy place. There's a lot of enthusiasm, team spirit, community giving, you know, people of all ages, all abilities. There's something in the recreation department for everyone, whether you want to do passive or active recreation. And the new programs and the newsletters and the innovative ideas about the trips and there's something in it, you know, for everyone. And I've always admired, I've had the pleasure of working with Karen and then previously with Deb Cipriani, and then as a youth I benefited from Ron Sweeney, who had been here for a number of years. So I've seen the evolution of the department from many different perspectives. So I think you'll be a great addition to that long history of leadership and I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
In the future, thank you.
I just want to say congratulations, wish you the best of luck. Look forward to seeing you implement maybe some new programs, new ideas.
Yes.
And as my colleague has spoken, Wilmington has always had a love affair with their kids in the rec departments. So enjoy it, have fun with it and good luck.
Thank you.
That newsletter is like the most coveted, we all, I know, when my kids were younger, it was like, once it coming out and as soon as you got on there, looked, got them right side, you know, signed up right away.
Speaking of which, next newsletter will be out next week.
Okay.
Summer newsletter.
Yeah, no, that's like, we test the newsletters, oh, sorry.
Congratulations, I want to congratulate you on compliment the manager, I think it's a terrific hire. You go from one championship program to another.
That's right.
So hopefully you'll continue with your winning ways and I also want to congratulate Karen on her upcoming retirement. Thank her for her service, but good luck.
Thank you.
I, I want to echo my colleagues' comments, they said it all. I just want to wish you the best and, yeah, I wish Karen much luck in her new endeavor come September 30th. I can't wait to be there myself. But you, I'm sure that you'll do fine and, and if you don't, well, someone will tell you, I'm sure. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you. Just want to say, I encourage you all, check out a program or a trip.
Yeah.
I know, Lil, you said your kids have done things with us. I know Greg's children have done a couple of things with us and hopefully they continue to do more and encourage you all to do the same. So come by, say hello sometime.
Sure will.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brett, appreciate it. You too.
All right, so next under communications is correspondence memo from me with regard to the MBTA ongoing discussions. We had, this is a Zoom session that was held a couple of weeks ago. Chair Mocelli, selectwoman O'Connell, Representative Robertson were involved from the town as well as representatives from the T. Work, they noted that work continues on the design of the platform in North Wilmington. Emails are now being issued from the T in advance of work to be done at the various crossings. The most recent one came to us last Friday. And discussions took place about the signs that were referenced in their presentation. You'll recall they talked about these blue signs that contain phone numbers. There's some suggestions offered about possibly a QR code, they're looking into that, but ongoing discussions and we're continuing those. We'll be meeting again via Zoom on this coming Wednesday. Next, also a memo from me with regard to the Olin Superfund site. So Olin is required to perform some sampling and investigation of 18 monitoring wells that are located off of Middlesex, off the Middlesex Canal, essentially down near Town Park. This is part of the effort to establish the boundaries of the contamination zone. The, by virtue of the fact that this is a superfund site and it's under EPA's control, their directives do supersede any local approvals, but they are looking to work with the town and the conservation commission to make sure we're comfortable with the approach that's being taken. In fact, the plan is to have the consultant that's working with Olin make a presentation to the conservation commission to inform them of the proposal. And that, we're going to, actually, there is a meeting scheduled tomorrow with staff and representatives from Olin to discuss the particulars on this approach to try to access these wells. It's a tough terrain and there's a particular type of vehicle that's being proposed to do that work.
Good question. To the chair, if I may, Mr. Hall, on this upcoming meeting, will our KP law be involved in that call or will our special counsel that we retain be involved in that call?
Well, so special counsel was involved in a, a call that we had this past week. The conversation that'll be taking place tomorrow is more of a technical conversation, so representatives from GeoInsight will be involved as well as staff, but Dan Deutsch will not be participating in tomorrow's conversation.
Thank you.
Next is the communication that was, that was spoken about earlier. This communication comes from Juan Vega, the Assistant Secretary of Communities and Programs, announcing the $1 million increase in the Mass Works program. This is technically an amendment to the existing program, so the town collectively will be receiving eight million, $3,891,000 for the project that Paul Looney spoke about earlier. Next is a communication from Colin McNeese, the General Counsel, Mass Housing, with regard to the West Street project. He notes in here that the project eligibility has been granted to 100 West Street LLC to go forward. In, in the correspondence here, they reference a number of different issues that were identified in the town's comment letter and they're advising the proponents to be, to work with the town to achieve some of those objectives and address those concerns. I would note that the letter notes in part that Wilmington is 19 units short of its 10% requirement to essentially avoid 40B projects. I think it is noteworthy that the Princeton Properties project was slated to have 22 units, but ultimately all of them would have counted toward our housing share, but of course those are tied up in appeal.
Ma'am chair, just a question, yeah, I, I saw that, Mr. Hall, 9.76%. It really is a shame that we, because of that appeal, we've fallen below the 10% threshold and are faced with a 40B. But regarding the sewer, how is that going to affect us? Are they going to be taking from the, the inventory that we have? Is that, I mean, do you have any feeling for that or idea on that?
At this point, no, I think that remains to be seen. That's certainly going to be a discussion point that we're going to have, where that ultimately, how that ultimately plays out remains to be seen. One of the, as you recall, one of the things that we identified in the comment letter was questioning or seeking more information about the, from the proponents demonstrating that they need access to, to the sewer system. So there, there's a lot of work to be done in that.
And that would affect our inventory if, if, you know, they had to take from that, correct?
Right, so we have a certain number of. Right. So we have a certain number of, translates into housing units available for additional sewer capacity. To the extent that they tie in, this is going to draw that down to some measure. Right?
To follow up on that point, and like I said before previously, if we looked at the comprehensive plan that was, has been part of the town's history for a number of years, it absolutely unequivocally says that there's no sewer. And as I had said before, it has nothing to do with the applicant. I don't care who the applicant is. It would be anyone. I would come to that same conclusion. And what I find just to be, you know, of pause and concern is that when I had asked her in the presentation, if you couldn't get sewer, what does your plan be? Meaning having an onsite waste management system, which does exist. However, in doing that, it would take the density away and it would take the amount of units down, which would impact profitability. And the answer from the consultant was they in essence don't have a plan B because they felt confident because they have the affordable component that they will receive relief, according to their attorney who wasn't present. She said, I can't give you the exact terms, but I believe legally we'll be able to work around the affordable factor and we'll get relief to get the sewer. So, you know, like I said, no disrespect towards the applicant, but it sounds to me like the state will do what it will do when it wants to do it. And that's disheartening when we have all of these factors put in paper and there's a workaround and yet there's an appeal that's tied up in the courts through the same state, you know, that can sit there and kind of erode another business developer's opportunity to move forward because they have to go through all of these appeals even though they, they did get a, you know, a, you know, a definitive judgment from DEP in their favor, that that just gets to sit idle. But this application was submitted and frankly came through the process very quickly. I know of a developer in town that is trying to get, you know, his application approved for affordable units on Lowell Street and has been sitting on ice, not even able to put shovels in the ground. Granted, not the same circumstances, but that's just sitting on the desk and not even being approved. So I'm happy that this is getting attention, but just seems that, you know, depending on what the topic is, is how quick it's going through the process. So maybe I'm, you know, connecting too many dots, but you know, I'm not particularly impressed with how some of these other open-ended items that would help for affordable units in the town are just sitting, sitting idle for various reasons. And I, I'm not expecting a response from anybody at this table, but I would be remiss to say that I'm trying to follow the bouncing balls around in these given projects and it seems inconsistent at the state level, which is disheartening, you know, at best.
When are we supposed to hear on Princeton? Is it next month?
Uh, yeah, I think it's scheduled for that, but we'll, we'll see. I would note that just with respect to this, the 100 West Street Project, they did submit their application to the Board of Appeals last Friday. So the expectation, well, the requirement is that the public hearing has to begin within 30 days and subject to any kind of extension they might grant. The first public hearing would have to start in, in May.
Let me just be clear, like this avenue that's being explored, this makes business sense to me. This is a track that this applicant has to run on. No one can fault someone for, for going down this avenue. I'm simply saying that the delays in different areas and how, you know, appeals can just be, you know, derailing other plans that just sit on ice for long periods of time, where we were just discussing this and it's already back. You know, so it just doesn't seem like everything. That's all I'm saying. But, you know, if I were in this, this business person's avenue, I would be doing the same exact thing because it makes business sense to do. So why wouldn't you ask for this opportunity and have them tell you no? So I don't begrudge this application. I just feel that there are other projects that have been put on ice for too long.
So next under correspondence, we have a communication from Mary Picardi from the MSBA Mass School Building Authority. As you recall, as part of the closeout process for the eligibility period, one item, one, the final item is establishing the enrollments for the schools K through five. And the initial numbers that they provided to us at the end of December, thereabouts, those numbers were presented prior to us having the information on this 100 West Street Project. So there were some discussions that were held about a month ago or so with representatives from MSBA, the school administration, myself, George Hooper, with Brian Perry was on the call about the numbers that were presented. In addition, we provided information about the West, 100 West Street Project. So as a consequence, the numbers of students have been revised as provided by MSBA. So initially, they had identified that 110, 120 students were identified as the, in the kindergarten category for a potential school. That number has been increased up to 130. 465 students were identified as grades K to three. That number has been revised up to 510. And then 695 students were identified in the K to five category and that number has been revised up to 755. These are exclusive of pre-K, which will be addressed separately. And at this point in time, there is a sign off that has to take place with the school superintendent, the chair of the school committee, and the chair of the executive board, in this case, the Board of Selectmen. So Lil will be asked to sign off on the, the numbers. We believe, based upon what we've reviewed, that the information, these updates are reflective of our best estimates of student population. I know Paul Rogiro has gone through the numbers in detail. Next, under communication is a letter from Paul Bruce. He notes that he is requesting the renewal of his constable status. Notes that he is seeking this renewal status for the 2022 to 2023 period. Separately, a similar letter has been received from Ronald DiGorio, again, seeking renewal of his constable status with the town of Wilmington. We have a letter that was sent out back in February as, this is to Robert Fasulo Jr., who is Chair of the Republican Town Committee, just noting that the existing member on the Board of Registars, Priscilla Ward, is not seeking reappointment as part of the process. It's spelled out in Chapter 51, Section 15. The Republican Town Committee, in this case, was put on notice that they had the opportunity to provide names, three names to the Board of Selectmen. Then separately is a response from Mr. Fasulo, in which he provides three names for the Board's consideration to serve on the Board of Registars, the first being Robert Fasulo, the second being Kelly Richards, and the third being Jeffrey Cohen.
Are we going to get follow-up information on that? So we can appoint or how's that?
Follow-up information?
Yeah. So we have to appoint someone to this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then the final item under communications is from Verizon, just noting some program changes. ESPN College Extra HD, channels 821 to 828 will be removed from the FiOS lineup.
Move on to the board to consider.
So under board to consider, the first item was the signing of the proclamation declaring April 29th Arbor Day, which is taken care of. The next item under board to consider is signing of a purchase and sales agreement with Michael Fockingham relative to the sale of town-owned land located on Aldrich Road, Aldrich Street, MAP 9 Parcel 56 pursuant to affirmative vote of Article 59 at the annual town meeting on May 1 on 2021. So you'll recall, there were a couple of parcels that were, that were approved at town meeting for sale. This was one of them. It's, the process, a request for proposal was issued. There was only one bidder. It turns out to be Mr. Fockingham for the total amount of $25,025. And he has signed off on the purchase and sale and it would be my recommendation that the board take a vote to authorize the signing, the purchase and sale.
Make a motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
So moved.
And just a question somewhat related and related. How come this took so long, a whole, almost a whole year to get this process done? And can you explain the other process that's going to be taking place with the other piece of property on Lake Street?
Yeah, the, in terms of this process, it, I think part of it was, we had not had, as I recall recently anyways, a sale. So we had to go through and revise the purchase and sale. I know Valerie Gingrich, who's really spearheaded this, was dealing with council both about revising the request for qualifications, which was, a request for proposal rather, which was issued, as well as developing the purchase and sale. The other case, as you recall, was some property on Lake Street and the process essentially took place on a parallel track. But when the bids were open, there was some question about the propriety of one of the folks that submitted a bid. As I, as you recall, from a prior meeting, I indicated that, I looked into it. It did not, there was nothing factually that would indicate that there was anything inappropriate. But I think, given the appearance that process, those proposals were not accepted. And the plan is at this point to issue another request for proposal after town meeting. So there's, be looking for a, is there, was there a motion?
We already did.
Okay, so just, see if you're on that one. All right. So next is the, executing the access agreement with Mass DOT. This has been essentially waiting for Mass DOT to come back with the access agreement. Paul Looney has been working on this with council. In fact, it, the agreement did not come back until late on Friday, notwithstanding the fact that he had indicated we needed to have it by Thursday in order to get it on the agenda. So since I was not able to provide it to the board in advance to review, this would be tabled and brought forward at the chair of meeting in May.
Do you need a motion to table?
I, I don't think so. I think I can just, we'll reschedule it for the first meeting in May.
Okay.
Next is a request from the Wilmington Barron Parents and Friends to sell cold drinks, pom poms and balls, balloons rather, during the Memorial Day Parade.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So moved.
Then also this request from the Wilmington Barron Parents and Friends to sell refreshments of various types during the Recreation Commission's summer concert series.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
We have a board to consider approving the secondhand license, secondhand dealer license for Robert Flaherty Jewelers.
So moved. Second.
Favor. Can you just go over the recommendations on that, please? Specifically, I know we've had, needed the police approval on that.
Yes. So I do have response from Chief Joe Desmond. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of Paul Flaherty of Robert P. Flaherty Jewelry, Inc. to renew the secondhand dealer license. Also have a memo here from Al Spalding. The building department has no issues with the secondhand dealer license renewal for Paul Flaherty. That is it.
And this one from Pam McKenzie.
Oh, yep. Recommends approval of this license. No outstanding issues.
Give it all in favor?
Similar request for GameStop. They have a same license. Recommendations, we have, again, from Chief Desmond, notes that the police department recommends approval of David Roberts, manager, application to renew the secondhand dealer's license. We have recommendation, or a letter from Al Spalding, building inspector, building department has no issues with the secondhand dealer license renewal for GameStop, Inc., 246 Main. And then also a note from Pam McKenzie, treasurer collector, recommends approval for this renewal.
The motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right. Next, we have the board to consider approving the, board to consider appointments and reappointments to Animal Control Officer, the Board of Appeals, Board of Registars, Council on Aging, Fence Viewer, Town Council, and Special Counsel and Constables. We have the following individuals listed. Animal Control Officer, one-year term to expire 2023, Christopher Sullivan. Board of Appeals, five-year term to expire 2027, Thomas Syracusea. Board of Registars, three-year term to expire 2025. And this is the vacancy created by Ms. Ward's indication that she's not seeking a reappointment. So you have three names that have been presented to you and it would be the board's call as to who you wish to fill that spot.
These, through the chair, I see that they expire on a particular time. They start when July 1st? Do these, do these appointments run from May 1st to?
It, they, they expire on the 30th of April. So, yeah.
So do you want us to take them up one at a time?
Well, I can go through the balance here and then if you want to take them in the aggregate, I guess with the exception of the Board of Registars, the balance. So we have Council of the Arts, three-year, two-year term to expire 2024. Diane. Diane Gio Bardino, Judith Hughes, Linda Malloy, Holly Popio. Fence Viewer, one-year term, expires June 30, 2023, Paul Looney, John Spalding. Town Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2023, KP Law. Special Council, one-year term to expire June 30, 2023, Dan Deutsch, Esquire, Brooks and Durencis. And then Constables, one-year terms to expire 2023, we have Barbara Cola, Jason Costa, Eric Randall, Jared Rankin, John Bridges, Jr., Paul Bruce, Jr., Ronald DiGigorio, Dennis Otis, William Papaselli, and Anthony Seiya. The last six that I noted have restrictions, they're not to solicit clients' authority to serve civil process for clients who need a service in Wilmington. I would also note that Chris Sullivan is only in conjunction with his duties as animal control officer. So the board may wish to consider a vote on the full slate, with the exception of the Board of Registars, and then take a separate vote on who you select for that spot.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yes.
Discussion.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the manager, specifically to the special town council, any indication of how long we can anticipate that we'll need this? And I think we're going on four years now. We've had KP Law on board by my recollection, and so they've had four years to get up to speed on what's happening at the Olin site. You have any idea how long we may need the services of the special town council? I mean, right now, we're paying for two councils.
Right. Well, so we're certainly, the special council is specifically for the Olin project. Dan Deutsch is, you know, that's his exclusive focus. Information, communication that comes through regarding Olin has been forwarded to KP. So to answer your question, you know, I think, I don't have a specific date as to when that would be appropriate. I guess it becomes a judgment call. I would imagine that KP could take over this role. It'll take, I think, even though they've been receiving the communications, it will take some period of time for them to get up to speed, just because they haven't been, you know, as involved, you know, they haven't been involved in some of the conference calls, for example, or discussions that, that we have had with, with EPA or Olin. So, it really is, I guess, a judgment call as to when, or if there was an interest in changing.
Yeah, well, thank you. Because one of the, I just feel obligated to bring this up. I mean, here we are, four years later, and one of the things I recall when we went through this process of transitioning to a new town council was that, you know, it was KP's intention to get up to speed, and that, you know, they were fairly confident that they could get up to speed, and that this would be a temporary solution, that we would pay for two councils. And so, I just felt like it was worthy, you know, four years later to bring it up and to see where we're at.
Right.
You know, that doesn't mean that maybe that ends today, but, you know, I think we should, you know, not lose sight of the fact that this was a temporary solution.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanted to raise that.
Okay.
Through, through the chair, yeah. I would agree with Mr. Bendel. I recall going through the interview processes, the chair at the time, and, and we asked KP, you know, how long would it take you to get up to speed? And he didn't, meaning Mark Rich at the time, didn't think it would take very long, because they, they deal with environmental issues all the time. And I, I thought we had left it so that he would be a mirror to, to the special council, so that he would be able to take it over, so that we're not paying two, two councils. I understand the importance of Dan Deutsch, for sure. I mean, he has the institutional knowledge of the, of the whole situation, and it's, it's great to have him on board, but at some point, you know, we need to see KP taking a, a, a bigger, bigger stand on this issue. And the only other question I have for you on these two contracts, are there any changes? You know, have there been any increases on hourly rates, or any of that?
Yes. So, in, in each case, the, the contract with KP has slated to go up, I believe it's $10 an hour. And their, I believe their rate at this point would be, and I'd have to check, because I don't have it off the top of my head, but I believe it's either, I think it's 220, or will, would be 220 as of 7/1. The, the rate for Dan Deutsch is going up, it's 360, and I believe the increase is three, slated to go to 370. But I, I guess I, before I commit to that, I know it's something in the order of 365 or 370, but I, I need to confirm the rate. It's been a while since I had that conversation.
It's considerably higher than KP.
Yes, right.
And that, you know, and when we took on KP, we noticed that there was a real difference between the prior legal town council as compared to KP. We saved tens of thousands of dollars for the community for top-notch service from KP. So, I just.
And if I could, Madam Chair, I don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Kara. I agree with you that obviously this is a, you know, what's, the Olin situation is a high priority, I think, for everybody. I don't want to speak for anybody, but it's pretty, pretty safe to say it's a priority for all of us. And so, I just, so just, I guess I'm putting out just the, the question out there, and I don't expect it to be answered, but, now, how long are we supposed to pay two councils for this? Is it, is it five years, 10 years, 20 years? And I'm not, I'm not posing you the question, I just toss it out there because it's something we ought to think about, and perhaps to help us decide that going forward, we maybe take another look at the breakdown. How many times did we, you know, utilize Mr. George last year, in this past year? How many times do we anticipate next year? You know, and, you know, obviously, I think we're all very pleased with the way that things are moving now. We've seen a lot of progress with the Olin site over the last couple year or so, and we hope that will continue, but, you know, I guess we got to think about this going forward. Is it 10 years we need to retain? Is it 20 years? You know, how long will it be? So, just food for thought, and it's not, not suggesting I may vote against it tonight, but I just want to, you know, having, I feel responsible to bring it up, because I was here in 2018, we had this very discussion, that this was a temporary solution until KP got up to speed. And they noted on several occasions, Mr. Kara, I recall, that they're, they have dealt with a number of other superfund sites, very similar to the Olin project. I know what we, we obviously all feel how important it is here, is not, you know, unique to just Wilmington. There are other superfund sites that KP has handled, and so, I think we ought to explore this a little bit more going forward.
I agree.
Madam Chair. Is there a way we could hold off on the vote for, and sit down with all legal, and find out where they sit, where we sit?
Through the chair. I'm not suggesting that we hold off on the vote. I think that we need to move forward and personally vote for KP and vote for, for Deutsch and, or Brooks and Durencis. You know, I'm not for, for not holding them off at this point in time, but I am in favor of what Mr. Bendel said. We have now a year or two.
Right.
To discuss this and to get KP to see where they're at, to see, you know, in taking it over. Maybe they're not ready to take it over, as Mr. Hall said, for another two, three years, and, and okay. I mean, but we should know that.
Yeah.
But I think we should move forward with, with appointing these, these two.
And to your point, Mr. Kara, if I can, I would just like to get that on the record for the future board, you know, who, who needs to make that decision, maybe it isn't two or three years, that there needs to be a record that, you know, in 2022, that particular board thought that, you know, we needed two more years, we needed three more years, whatever it was, so it could be revisited and not forgotten. Because, you know, residents are paying for two law firms right now, and they should know that.
I would want to just be clear, though, notwithstanding the fact that there are two firms, it, it's, it's not that we are getting billed by KP for Olin-related items, so we're not, we're not getting billed for two, from two law firms for the superfund site. Certainly, KP is getting communications that come through that are dispatched to Dan Deutsch, but we are, understandably, we're paying for two law firms, but one law firm is being paid strictly for the Olin-related projects. KP is everything else, but not being, they're not billing for the Olin items.
And the only way, thing I would respond to that is respectfully, is that, yes, you are correct, but one is at a significantly higher rate.
Right.
And let me, and let, let me just add that, a special town council is, is sometimes, has happened in the past, too. We've had special town council for certain issues like the, the electric car. We had to get a special town council. So, wait, you know, but at some point, we, we need to focus on this discussion, moving, you know, moving forward.
Madam Chair, through you, just to kind of add to the points that were made, I would agree that there needs to be further discussion, because if there is going to be some sort of transition, you may have two attorney firms in the same room as a means to be transitioning in a more intertwined manner. So, I think it does rise to the level of a bigger conversation and a strategic plan as to how to integrate them when appropriate to kind of, are the memo updates that they're getting adequate for a transition? Maybe they need FaceTime to meet on certain things, in which case you'd be paying for both seats at the table. So I think, to your points, it has to be, you know, a measured deliberate plan if this is the decision, you know, collectively, whether it's through this body, the town manager, consulting with KP, if they're ready to engage, you know, it's also, too, from a business dynamic, you're going to, essentially, the writing is going to be on the wall for Dan Deutsch when he's sitting at the table, and now we're bringing KP, that's going to be kind of a change in behavioral circumstances. So I trust that everybody will kind of step through the business mechanics such that everybody, you know, keeps a positive attitude and is, is, is for the town of Wilmington. But I think we, this is a much bigger conversation that has to kind of be taken offline to plan how to roll it out to the public in a transparent manner, what we, what we plan on doing. So I'm just, I'm just supporting what you're both are saying, but I think it's definitely going to have to be an agenda item. I agree.
And to the, to.
No, I just, go ahead, please. I, thank you. I just, just to be clear, this is my final thought on this, I don't want to complicate a peanut butter and jelly sandwich here, but I, you know, I intend, full disclosure, to support this, I'll vote for this group, but I just, you know, felt obligated to bring this up. Because it's something we need to think about. I'm not suggesting we get rid of anyone tonight.
Right.
I'm just saying, at some point, you know, we, we had discussions four years ago, that this was going to be a temporary solution. I just want to raise that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a conversation we need to have, offline.
And I'd just like to add, I like peanut butter and jelly sandwiches, but.
The tougher the complicated.
But the other thing, too, is that, you know, it has been progressing. I mean, DEP, EPA, I mean, we've seen significant movement in, in the remediation of it, and we have it tonight, that they're going to do more, more testing. So, this may be coming to a conclusion within two, three years, so it may not make sense to remove Dan Deutsch as special counsel. So, you know what I'm saying? It just.
It's a conversation we should definitely have.
I was just proposing that we table it for further discussion, but listening to my colleagues, if it's something that we can, we can vote on, and then, at a later date, have an extensive conversation regarding this, and I agree with it that we are paying for two attorneys, and I do understand that one, special counsel's only going to be paid for the Olin mill issues. So, I would, I'll support it and ask that we bring it up at a later date for discussion.
Okay. The floor on board.
Just now, another question, since we're going to be voting on all of these at once, it feels like, other than the registrar.
Right.
In regards to the constables, I know, Mr. Hall, last year, there was an issue with one individual, which was subsequently resolved and became a constable. Do we normally get a recommendation from the police chief to say that, you know, this box has been checked and they're okay?
No, not typically, once they're on board. I don't, no.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Okay. So, the motion, any further discussion?
Do you want to take, I'll make a motion that we take up all these items, with the exception of one, which I think needs a little more discussion, right? Because we don't have a nomination, so maybe it's easier that we take up everything else except for?
Except for the, yeah, we have three.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in the discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
I stand corrected.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you, Bev. Nope.
So, I should just say, all in favor of?
Well, we don't know who the.
Well, I think.
Well, no, I mean, with the exception of this one.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the reappointments that are.
We already did that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we did that.
Sorry, that, you did say that about five seconds ago, didn't you?
We're in discussion.
Can we amend the motion?
Yeah. But I thought that was part of the original motion, was to exclude it.
Yes.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's already been made, the motion was already made with the exclusion of that registrar piece.
My apologies.
And then it was seconded, and then we've been in a long discussion, so it's understandable that we're.
You're peanut butter and jelly sandwiches. I complicated it out.
Then I'll say, all in favor.
Okay.
Thank goodness Bev is here to screen us out.
Now, on the board of registrars, Mr. Fasulo provided three names, Robert Fasulo, Kelly S. Richards, and Jeffrey Cohen. Now, we're supposed to pick from these three? We don't know, I personally don't know any of them.
Yes, I mean, I, I don't, I've not historically offered any comment on them, it's been left to the board to decide.
Well, we don't get like a little, you know what I mean, like write-up about them, a little resume or nothing? I'm just supposed to pick a name? It just seems odd to me, usually, you know?
No. It hasn't, that hasn't been the case historically. I, you know, it's, the general law states that the town committee is to provide three names to the board of selectmen for consideration, so, there has not been.
So do I, just, we just offer up a name? I'll select Kelly Richards.
I'll second that.
Open for discussion. No? All in favor of Kelly Richards being, is that how?
Is there a motion?
Is there a motion? Yeah.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to.
She made the motion.
To appoint Kelly Richards to the board of registers, three-year term to expire in 2025.
Yep, Gary seconded it.
Did I second it?
All right, okay, all in favor?
Yep.
Okay, so moved. Sorry, that just, I.
I do agree with you, though.
That's just weird, right?
You don't know the, the three peoples.
And by any means, no offense to the other two, I just went like this. I don't mean to, just seems odd, I don't know.
But I think historically, I think that's the way.
Yeah, it's just very odd, it's like, it's picking out of a hat. But, okay.
The next is a board to consider ratification of the town manager's appointments, reappointments to commission on disabilities, historical commission and permanent building committee. So, we do have vacancies here that we're looking for individuals to fill on the commission on disabilities for a term expiring 2024, so that's still a work in progress. Commission on disabilities, three-year term to expire 2025, Carol Hilbinger and Robert Oliveri, and then there's one vacancy there, we're looking for, for an individual for that spot. Historical commission, three-year terms to expire 2025, Bonnie Smith and Joseph Jackson. Permanent building committee, you'll recall, Mr. Kachuk was on the committee for a stretch and then has stepped down tonight in the, in the process of filling that vacancy.
I'll move. I'll move, I'll move to approve the appointments.
Second.
All in favor, so moved.
And then, board to consider, the town manager appointments for various boards, committees, and commissions, so I'm noting the animal inspector, one-year term, Christopher Sullivan, building inspector, John Spalding, the alternate inspector, Michael Desmond, Carter Lecture Fund Committee, three-year term expiring 2025, Barbara Bishop and Adele Passmore, cemetery commission expiring 2025, Cynthia McHugh, conservation commission, three-year terms expiring 2025, Therin Bradley, Michael McGinnis, and Donald Pearson, elderly services commission, three-year terms to expire 2025, Nancy Otovic, Gail Fortopapis, and Mark Ryan, electrical inspector, one-year term to expire 2023, Frederick Sutter with Arthur Kelly as an alternate, and James Largington as an alternate, gas inspector, one-year term, 2023 is the expiration, Sean Inman and John Mitek Jr. is the alternate, board of health, three-year term to expire 2025, Daniel King, library trustees, three-year terms to expire 2025, Jeffrey Nussbaum and Donald Pearson, Middlesex Canal Commission, two-year terms to expire 2024, Betty Bigwood, Michael McGinnis, and Neil Devens is an alternate, planning board, looking to fill this vacancy with Mr. Sorrentino not seeking reappointment, we have a candidate that we're looking at, we'll have that name shortly, planning, plumbing inspector, one-year term to expire 2023, Sean Inman, John Mitek Jr. is the alternate, public ware, one-year term, Christopher Dindo, recreation commission, three-year terms to expire 2025, Charles Deondo and Jennifer Crane, trustee of trust funds, unexpired term to expire 2024, April Kingston, veterans agent, one-year term to expire 2023, Louis Samoglia IV, veterans grave officer, one-year term to expire 2023, Louis Samoglia IV, water and sewer commission, three-year term to expire 2025, Mike Camasea, and wiring inspector, one-year term to expire 2023, Frederick Sutter with Arthur Kelly as the alternate, and James Largington as the alternate.
Motion to accept.
These are, these are just my appointments.
Oh, just your points, okay. All right, great, thank you, we'll go to public comments, we do not have any, any announcements. No, and you do?
Yes, please, I just wanted to, it was mentioned earlier, but I wanted to recognize and congratulate Mrs. Ward, Patty Ward is the town from working with the town for over forty years, formerly the clerk, and obviously with the board of registrars, so this past election was her last, and I think she was one of those folks that worked behind the scenes tirelessly for a long time, she ought to be recognized, and we really appreciate all the work that she's done, and appreciate, obviously, our current clerk and her staff for this past week's election, and I wanna congratulate Mr. Kyra and all those who also were elected, and appreciate their volunteerism, and wish them well, so I wanted to give a shout-out to Patty Ward.
Thank you, yes, I'm glad, and I do wanna extend my congratulations to Mr. Kyra and Mr. Bendel on their extension of a new three-year term, congratulations on your, your election, looking forward to continuing to work with you both, and again, same with every other school committee and everybody else.
Yeah, I wanna echo Mr. Bendel's comments about Patty Ward, a great lady and a hard worker for the community, and congratulations to you as well, Mr. Bendel, and all those that ran, and a big thanks to those that took time out of their Saturday to come and vote, wasn't a lot, I believe it was around six hundred and thirty-four.
Is that what it was, it was like three and a half percent or something, yeah?
Yeah, which is too bad.
It is, it is.
I mean, you want people to participate, but I wanna thank everybody for doing that and coming up.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just wanna personally congratulate both Kevin and Greg.
Thank you.
Look forward to extending the board's cooperation with everyone, thank you.
Judy. I, too, would like to offer my congratulations to you both, obviously, running for public office is not an easy task, it's a, it's a commitment, it's volunteerism, you're taking time away from your family, your children, your loved ones and friends, so that's never lost on me, anybody that takes the initiative to go through a public process and put their name on a ballot regardless, so also wanna congratulate all the other candidates that were on the ballot as well, school committee, newcomer to the Shawshene School Committee as well, so I wish everyone the very, very best, I wanted to also just acknowledge again this evening that we're all wearing an article of clothing that's blue for autism awareness, so that's for the month of April, I also wanted to, just I know it's gonna come under important dates, but just to remind everybody about town meeting this coming Saturday, April 30th, it starts at nine AM, is what I understand, it's, it's going to be at the high school auditorium, to make sure people are aware of that, we obviously need a forum to get started, there's several articles that are being presented, there's always a lot of feedback that you see publicly on message boards and just, you know, conversation that people believe that there's a small subset of residents that are making the decisions for the town, and there is some truth to that, but those, that, that small section of residents are the ones that actually walk through the door and actually, you know, come to participate, so they're making those decisions because they decided that they wanted to participate, so, you know, I'm respectful of people's family and work commitments, and that a Saturday isn't always possible for some, but if people can take the time, if they have it, to come down and participate in that civic process, it would certainly be valued and appreciated, so thank you for that opportunity to share those thoughts.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, and now we will move on to new business, any new business?
Yeah, just a quick question, or maybe, could we be provided an update on the incident that took place at the high school, I know it had a lot of, a lot of news.
Coverage.
Coverage, yeah, and we've not, and I know that there's been some investigation from Police Chief Desmond, and we haven't received any type of follow-up on that, and, and the news coverage really put Wilmington in a, in a bad light, unfortunately, and I just wanna see where, where he's at with that, if we could, I know it's, it's a school issue, you know, it's maybe not a board of selectmen's issue, but when I look at it being on all of the major networks, I, I think it's a town issue, and, and I think it would be nice to, to find out what, what's happening with that investigation.
Good point.
I will follow up with the chief, we've had some preliminary conversations, I know the, there has been some conversations with Marion Ryan, her office anyways, and I guess, let me find out specifically where things stand.
Okay, good, Judy? Just to add, I know that you had entered, or started the meeting with making comments on Yantile, and I don't, you know, wanna elongate that, and I think your comments were on point, and I know that there was a press release from the town manager, I was hoping maybe at a future meeting through you as the chair, that we could have an update on Yantile, just from an overall update, how I think, I know that that's not the only field in town, but that is a flagship destination, there's been a significant investment into that space that we're still paying for, all the other fields are equally important, but specifically there, if we can just get in kind of a state of affairs as to how things are going, how, how the cameras are, you know, in effect, do we have enough, you know, any sort of updates on the police investigation that could be public, when and if the time comes, you know, at an appropriate time, I wouldn't mind getting an, an update as to all the wonderful things that are going on at Yantile, and if there are any areas of improvement that we should be looking at, you know, as a town. And to that end, there was a public release from the Wilmington Police Department today online, that talked about a reported incident of vandalism at the MBTA location in North Wilmington, and not to say that they're interrelated, but we've had two vandalism incidents that have occurred, and then prior to that, there was another incident where the custodial staff from Wilmington had approached a group of young people in the men's room, so that was even a third incident, so, you know, I've talked to the manager, you know, during a one-on-one conversation, is to see what we can do as, as a community to bring some public awareness, see something, say something, not engage with people on your own as a civilian, but call, you know, the police, or to engage with the town to report these incidents and see what we can do, you know, overall to get these situations under control, whether it's, you know, detective work, you know, mountain bike units, whatever the town, you know, what's the right deployment of resources, the MBTA situation was, was transferred over to the MBTA police for that, because it's in their purview, I received a call today from the officer that's investigating it, and the reason why I received a call is because I reported the issue to Jeff today, because I, there was a resident in Wilmington that was one of the first train riders at the north, over in North Wilmington, that he took some screenshots and sent it to me and said, I don't know if people are aware of this, but this is what, what I'm seeing right here, and so I reached out, you know, and immediately Jeff got right back to me, was in immediate contacts, contact rather, with the chief, so, you know, back to the comments about, you know, publicly, no one wants to see, hear, or say bad news, we certainly don't wanna, you know, be publicly making Wilmington look bad in the public light, but at the same time, the public needs to know what's going on, so that people can be vigilant, and it's not that we don't want bathrooms open, it's not that we don't wanna service our residents, but, you know, things are happening that if we just sweep under the rug, don't discuss it, and bring it to the forefront, it's, it's not going to improve, but yet, you know, every time we bring Wilmington up in a negative light, I'm sensitive to the PR response to that, too, I don't know what the right message is, but I just know that this isn't, this behavior isn't what's the best representation of Wilmington, it's not a community that I, you know, wanna live in, that, you know, has this happening on a regular basis, and I'm assuming, you know, wholeheartedly that many of you probably agree with that, too, so whatever we can do as a board to rally support, to say that we support any, any initiatives to try and bring things back to a better state of affairs, I'm, I'm all on board for that.
Yep, absolutely.
I have one request, too, Mr. Hall, if we could please, you know, can we get an update on the number of lifeguards that Karen expects, I know it won't be long, a couple weeks, that'll be the hot topic, is Silver Lake, and, you know, and I know she has made great efforts to try to get a lot of lifeguard certified, I know she's teamed up actually with Mr. Tilslie at Shawshene Tech to try to get some people certified, April vacation, but unfortunately, they didn't have enough people sign up, so they couldn't run the course, but, so I would anticipate that that will be an issue, and I didn't know if she could just provide us a status, I know it's early, but it won't be long till that's a hot topic issue is Silver Lake, and then I'm, I'm confident that Karen is all over it, I'm just curious what the status is, and if there's anything we can do to help.
Yeah, I don't know the number offhand, I'll certainly follow up with her, I believe the last time I checked with her, it was less than ten that we had available, we typically need something in the order of fifteen to eighteen, in order to operate the hours that we normally do.
And just bring it up, because I think we're gonna have to, you know, along with Karen and her team, Brett, obviously, who are on top of it, no question, just whatever we can do to support, try to, you know, be creative, that's obviously gonna be an issue.
Yeah, and I, I would say that, you know, based upon prior conversations with Karen, this is not unique to Wilmington, I think many of these, many communities with beach areas are struggling with the same issue.
Yeah, sure, no, good points.
If there's any lifeguards out there, we'd love to have you.
Come on down. All right, so we're gonna move into, onto important dates.
I would just note before covering important dates, that we are looking to recognize Ms. Ward and also Mr. Sorrentino following the town meeting, so we'll be having, having them in.
That's great.
Under important dates, April 27th is a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM, April 30th, as was noted, is the annual town meeting, high school auditorium, nine AM, April 30th is also a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM, May 4th is a town school admin building committee, town hall, room nine, six PM, as previously noted, May 9th is a Special Olympics opening ceremony, Wilmington High School, nine fifteen AM, next selectmen's meeting is May 9th, town hall, room nine, seven PM, May 11th, senior center building committee, town hall, room nine, six PM, May 12th, peace officers' memorial observance, public safety building, six PM, April 18th, town school admin, building committee, town hall, room nine, six PM, and then the 28th of May is the senior center building committee, town hall, room nine, six PM.
All right, thank you, now I will pass it over to Selectman Bendel for our salute to service.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and on behalf of the board of selectmen, it's my privilege to present tonight's salute to service to Michael Johnson, Officer Michael Johnson of the Wilmington Police Department is a United States Marine Corps veteran with two deployments in Iraq and Afghanistan, for his time there, he was awarded the Sea Service Deployment Ribbon, the Iraqi Campaign Medal, the Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, the National Defense Medal, the Afghan Campaign Medal, and also, it's important to note that Mike was born and raised here in Wilmington, has a great family here, still here, he's got a beautiful young family of his own, his wife and his daughter, and he's just a really good guy, if you get a chance to, to run into Officer Johnson, he's a really good person, and so for all those reasons and many more, we salute him, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Officer Johnson, for your service and your continued service to the people of Wilmington, that will do it for tonight, do I have a motion?
Motion to.
Yep.
Second.
All right, all in favor, so moves, thank you, everybody, have a good night.